So it is five thirty, we will get started with the school committee meeting for July twentieth, twenty twenty, the meeting's being recorded. I think, sorry, just hit the wrong button, sorry about that. So Dr. Baer, I'll put it over to you for the discussion and vote on the athletic complex.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher, before we get to that, I think it's important that when folks decide to have a discussion, that we just do a little historical perspective on this topic. If we remember, we began this process, we were going on almost five years now, when the original place, three years ago, an article into the Capital Improvement Committee to take a look at a study which we were granted up to twenty thousand dollars to take a look at our failing outdoor facilities. And we hired Gale Associates to do the review and come back with a plan of which we ended up with A through G, including a double F plan that we presented three times to the public in various forms, as well as five different school committee meetings for folks to partake in on the time and so on. And at the same time, the senior center and the town hall were coming up, and it was a discussion that we take a look at a one project, one vote potential, which would have been the board of selectmen's decision at the end, but that the town hall, the senior center, and the athletic complex go forward. We filed for this past May's town meeting a question to in fact have it as one question on a ballot, we would have to do an exclusion. As a debt exclusion, that means regardless if it's one project, two projects, or three projects, that the town does not have the capacity to borrow the requested funds. Therefore, it must go out and ask its taxpayers to have a proposition, two and a half debt exclusion, which is a added tax placed on each home business for a period of time, typically twenty years, but it could be less or more, even it depends on the bonds and all of that. It was decided that the discussion on that, because of the C nineteen situation, we withdrew, recognizing that the board of selectmen, I should say, the select board was withdrawing its articles for the then June town meeting that just took place. My understanding that the discussions on the senior center and the town hall have been put back into discussion, and therefore, we were asked, or I should say, you were asked about your input on this very topic as well. So the question remains, A, to refile an article or to go to the joint board of selectmen's meeting this coming Thursday and have further discussions. I also want to note that prior to that, that you had a representative attend, not a voting member, Jerry Cohen. Ms. Cohen was your representative to the permanent building committee for the purposes of updates on the status of, A, the window project, and B, which ended up with the asbestos, and then B, the actual athletic complex. I attended three of those meetings over a year and a half period myself, one time representing Sherry, if she was unable to attend it, and have provided copies of information as well, besides our webpage and all of that stuff. I'm not sure about where the question was that came up from the permanent building committee, but it led to the request of a joint meeting with the board of selectmen by you folks, and I just wanted to have, I thought it would be, and make sense that you folks need to discuss this further since it had in fact been tabled or removed as an article back in June for the June town meeting, which was a shorter town meeting and less articles than usual. So that's kind of the update. The project itself consists overall of eight point six million. I don't have it directly in front of me, I have it actually in front of me. And the intent behind that is that we've looked at many different, like I said, A through G or the double F, of different options for us to have for the actual project, bear with me, I'm just getting it to come out. And we looked at the football field in the back of the Yale Elementary School. We then looked at tennis courts because we had issues at the middle school, and then the pit field, which is the older practice field that is essentially underwater. And the conclusion was to go with this option, G, for eight million, six hundred sixty seven thousand, four hundred ninety nine dollars, as put together on the fifth of November, twenty nineteen, which could fluctuate either way, I guess. And it was an eight lane track and synthetic turf field construction for two point eight million, a synthetic turf, multiple field, and baseball construction literally right behind my office area, if you want to view it, for four point four million. It was synthetic turf at the pit field for a million eighty three thousand, and tennis courts for three hundred forty one thousand. That included lighting of all the current football field and lighting of everything except for the tennis courts and the pit field. So that was the project that we were moving forward with. One of the questions that can come up is, A, do you stay to the side right now and not join any efforts? Not even sure what the, what the selectmen are going to do? What the building, my understanding is that they're looking at issue of choosing a site as the first thing that needs to take place. I E., is a piece of property between the town hall and the police station. If that's still in play, is there a consideration for purchasing that now? It may not even be, it could be a simple borrowing article for the costs instead of a debt exclusion to just get the land and then move forward later. We don't know that, I think maybe we'll find something that, something out on Thursday about that. The other question that came up from some of you is, can we look at this as our own project? The answer to that is yes. Can we look at this as multiple project? The answer to that is yes. These numbers would probably fluctuate somewhat, maybe even to the better. You know, it would still potentially require the ability to have to either go for a debt exclusion or is there a ability to borrow? Reminding that ability to borrow means it's like a mortgage, you have a guaranteed payment that you have to pay every July first. And versus a debt exclusion, which is a cost put on homes and businesses in order to be able to pay that debt off. That's the general perspective here.
Thanks, I really appreciate the overview. I think we've talked about this a lot. And I, I know that it could be overwhelming, it can get confusing because we've had so many different options. I think that we decided on this option because it was the most sort of financially sound, and it really gave us the opportunity for all of our students at Norton Public Schools to have, and our community, to have spaces for athletics that were appropriate. So if I could just ask you a couple of questions, anybody can chime in, Dina, Sherry, Dan, Kathleen. If we were to, so I think when I was listening to the select board meeting last week, if I'm not mistaken, it was last week, it could have been a few weeks ago, sorry, I'm not really sure when it was. Renee had shared numbers, and I unfortunately didn't write it down, but I remember her saying that in Norton, our unemployment numbers went from something very low, I want to say maybe three percent.
Two point nine percent to sixteen point nine percent from one year ago, so March to March, if you will. Or I mean, June to June, I think actually it's May numbers.
Thanks for confirming those numbers. I think that that's sort of what is part of the impetus for this conversation is to really think about timing, the timing on. So I want to be really very clear and say that when we removed this from the spring town meeting, it wasn't because we felt that we didn't need it or that the school didn't warrant the need for this. So I think we just really want to make sure that everybody who's listening or who's part of this conversation knows that Norton Public Schools needs this athletic complex. The question is, how do we move forward in the most thoughtful and appropriate way to support our students, to support our school system, and also to support the community? And I think that's where we're at, really thinking about options for moving forward. So, and I can see that you're unmuted, did you have a question? Or did you want to comment, or, oh, sorry?
Yeah, I mean, I did just have a comment, I mean, I can, I can hold up. You know, I, I mean, I think, you know, to your point, I do agree that this is something that, you know, the school and the town needs, but you know, what's kind of in the back of my mind and, and you know, my two cents on this is, I think we kind of need to wait a little bit and see what the town's thoughts are because, you know, I, I think it's a little bit, you know, financially irresponsible to take on something like this right now, you know, as a taxpayer and as a parent and, and all of that things considered. You know, I mean, people are hurting right now financially, so I don't think this is the best time, you know, to, to go for a debt exclusion, again, that's my opinion only. You know, and the other, the other part to that is if, you know, if it's not going to be one article and it's going to be multiple articles, then my concern with that is it's pitting, you know, the, the schools versus the town, and we've done, you know, we've done work to try and not continue that method of, you know, operating. You know, we don't want it to be school versus town as, as it's been for years, we want it to be town versus town. So I think that's, you know, that's kind of where my thought process is, is, you know, to me, I think it has to be all or none right now because, you know, if you put both of these on the same ballot or on the same article or different articles, I think it's going to be splitting the town, which is, I don't think anything any of us really want to do. Again, that, you know, that's my opinion on the subject.
So can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If we, if we separate this out, you know, if we look at the eight lane track and the synthetic turf fields where the current football field is now for the two point eight million, is that, what does that look like for us borrowing to do that and not having to do a debt exclusion?
Right, so we would have to have a discussion with both the board of selectmen, Mike Unins, and the finance committee about what debt is coming off and that is being added. The window project is going to be, is ongoing. And if you remember, we received fifty two cents, if I remember correctly, on the dollar on that project. So that has, that has a financial impact depending on how many years the town is choosing to lay that out. I also don't know what the debt is that's coming off of current debt and projects. And don't forget that there's that whole process with the sewer projects in terms of users and all of that, but you know, the town is, has borrowed again on that, on that project as well. So could you, can we ask the term for two point eight million? That's, that's a question that you could ask, yes.
Okay, because it, you know, in my head, I'm thinking, you know, this is going to sound crazy because, you know, I was going to the PBC meetings and I was the one really kind of, you know, took this project on in working with the PBC and, and the town hall and the senior center, but you know, I, I really have done just a complete one eighty, I don't think the time is appropriate right now. But again, like everybody else has said, it is something that we do need, so I.
So, so Sherry, to, to comment on that and to Dan's comment as well, I clearly understand. I mean, as you all know, I'm very involved in my community right now with the project and they're pushing it off because right now on July twentieth, I have no idea where our state budget is going to be. I do know that if the name, the change, the numbers change, whether there's money available, there's going to be a town meeting in either, I guess, August, September, or, I don't know when, that'll be at the board, at the selectmen. But my concern is that if we have the numbers, we do for that, that, I'm pretty sure we have to, because too, then I think the discussion is, when's the appropriate time to do this? Because we know that, for example, every project is going to have some type of a three, four, five, as high as maybe six, seven percent swing, if you know that you're not putting the shovel into the ground until next year, just because of the inflation costs of either labor or, let's say, materials. And the economy right now for us, as a school department only, I can only speak about that, Sherry, it's A or B, up to you folks, talk about some of the other things, but as a school department, we are in a very unknown financial situation. And that doesn't mean that we're not going to have to spend if, if we have sports, and that's another question that's still up in the air right now. It's my understanding there's going to be some information shared this week with the principals and athletic director. And depending on what that looks like, I mean, it was great to see a town meeting, our football field, because our football field hasn't, wasn't, hasn't been used since November, you know, because of football, and we had nothing in the spring. So it's the best that it's look, but it's still not, not doing what it's supposed to do, it still weeds and everything else. And we have lighting problems and the long list of things that we've already announced that we have with that. So it's going to potentially cause, let's say we have sports, it is going to cause some further expenditure by the school departments over the next few years, and some might suggest that that's a waste of money as well.
Yeah.
It's, it's interesting to me that if you don't do a debt exclusion, to me, it's, it comes down to, we know money is going to be tight, adding more debt, regardless of what it is, in the school department, but let's say the town as well, adding more debt means adding more to operational costs if it's not a debt exclusion.
I just am not confident that a debt exclusion is going to pass, even if we can push forward with the, you know, the three projects, one vote, yes or no. I'm, I'm just not confident anymore, like I was, you know, pre-COVID. And, you know, I, I just don't know that it's a smart move to even try to continue down that road for us as a school committee, or if we just say, hey, we're, we're going to take a step back right now.
You have the right to bring it up at any point. If you decide to, I mean, you did dismiss the article, so that means right now the article isn't printed anywhere, so that's the reason why I lie, I think the select, the select board is asking for some, some of your guidance because they're, they're the final decision, they call what goes on a warrant, and there isn't, pretty much everything goes on a warrant. So, you know, if you placed on, on the warrant at a town meeting, you're for vote. You know, you go back to the original principle, that was a push to have it all together. I mean, you're talking about twenty five million on the senior center of the town hall side, another eight on our side. You're looking at the same debt exclusion amount that you went for, for your final payment on your high school.
Right. The other thing that I've been thinking about is, how do we do this in phases? Is, is that an option at all? I, I think, Sherry, I totally understand what you're saying. But at the same time, the concern I have is if we take it off the table now, I'm not sure when it goes back on, right?
So. Well, I'm not, and just to be clear, I'm not saying take it off of the table. I'm, I'm saying, let's think about exactly what you're saying is, let's do this in phases. Listen, we know we need one, so why not work on, you know, the turf, you know, making the current football field a turf field and the eight lane track? So that we can host things there. I'm saying maybe we start with that one, and whether that means, you know, debt exclusion for two point eight, or do we try to, you know, figure out funding for that? That's what I'm saying, I'm not saying forego the whole thing, definitely not.
So then the question becomes, when, so how does it work? That's, I guess that's what is something that I've been trying to figure out, is how does it work? If we, let's for example, say we end up thinking that doing this in phases is a more feasible option, when do we get the sort of other turf that would be the multi sort of player, those kinds of things? So how do we go back and say, okay, well, we did sort of phase one, now we have to do phase two? That's always what's concerning to me, is we have historically in our town not been really good at voting yes for financial requests. So that's the part that I just worry about is, you know, if we're lucky enough to get phase one successfully sort of voted on, then how do we kind of then get phase two and phase three? Or, you know, that's the part for me that's concerning.
Right, so a couple of things to consider would be, let's say you went to the phase one, is the high school project itself. So you've got the whole track and you've got lights and all of that stuff going in there. There's a potential that part of that could be for a few years to take some of the room that would be coming in, or room that we have to move and moving into the back of the Yale School and then trying to, you know, at least fill in those holes that are over there that are pretty disastrous in my opinion for students to be on. The town has a very clear guideline that it moves articles forward, no matter what, to the town meeting. So it would be an article that would go forward, and it would be presented as a three-phase article so that people would know how you're coming back for. I think the key question is, what's the town's ability to borrow on a project that's three million dollars versus a project that's twenty five million?
Okay.
There are many towns that are doing it by phases, one of them is Birmingham. I know that they did one field and then they got another fifty thousand dollars to do another study of the fields, so they're moving in that direction. And then a lot of the other towns have also moved in, in the general sense of at least two fields. The other thing to do is to, is to take a look at, at this project, you know, not only in the phase process, but really take a look at the back of the Yale, which is the, the, the most significant amount, the four point four. You could start at eliminating potentially the pit field and the tennis courts, which would make the project now seven point two million. You can scale back, try to scale back, you know, the four point four million even more. Those are, those are discussions that we can have, I can have those with the, with the athletic complex committee, recall that committee back and ask them to relook at some of it. I think the key question is, it's June twentieth, on an article we didn't move, it's my understanding that the article, that the potential for Thursday is that the contract side, and I may be wrong in this, but I believe in trying to decide on the acquisition of which lane that the board of selectmen wants to potentially purchase. Not necessarily a project, I may be wrong, but I try to solve the questions around that theme. And that could be that they're actually phasing in, if they have a piece of property they can purchase, they can phase in purchasing that immediately. Who is the, is the select board, is the decision on where it's going to go? Or either one is going to go, or there's a.
So I think you're right in what you're thinking, just based on some emails with, with PBC. I think that, you know, they've done what they believe is their due diligence with giving the, the select board the options for the land, for where these buildings could go. And I think that they're looking for, you know, guidance from the select board as to, you know, what, what happens next. You know, they've, they've done all the work that they were asked to do, and so they're just wondering what the select board, what their next steps are going to be.
Right, which to me, which to me, you mean the potential for some type of a phase, and I E., you can purchase a piece of property that's private or, you know, windows, the one that's taken out money, the ones public there. I mean, I don't know what the final sites are, so I just didn't look at that. But as they're looking at the options of those sites, I mean, you can at least have the land if that's what, if that's what the option is. We don't really need that option, I hate to say it that way, but that's not really an option for us. I mean, just taking a million dollars and putting it into, into those fields is a bad financial idea for long-term planning, in my opinion, and we'll be talking about the very mistakes that were made when the high school started.
So I just have one question regarding the, if we do the phases and whatnot. You know, I know the, the tennis courts at the middle school aren't in the best shape currently, I don't believe. I mean, it's been a while since I've been down there, but, you know, would we have to put some money in those just to get them, you know, usable for our tennis teams until we can commence with the three?
That's a good question there, so, and Wade's on the line, he can add to this, and Aaron, but they are cracking, and don't forget that's where our Legion Field is. So any work over there is very, very difficult and provides concerns for what the best fit is. For example, if you're looking at the tennis courts and you look to the right to the first area, there's a huge crack right down that right side that's actually lifting up. The middle one's starting to do the same thing in the far end, which means it's not an uneven playing tennis court. And I don't know if Aaron or Wade want to chime in on that.
Yeah, I mean, the tennis courts, every late March, I mean, you're hoping the ground thaws in time, that the cracks settle a little bit, but at that time of the year, and some of those cracks are two, three inches wide, and then they do settle, but there's a lot of movement under that, which means the, the ground underneath it probably wasn't properly done. I can think of, you know, three or four really expensive things that if we don't do something soon, that we're going to, again, like Joe said, we're going to be band-aiding everything and trying to do, you know, if we need lights, the high school field. Those lights are, they, you can barely fix them as it is, I'm sure we could talk about that a little bit. You know, the track is starting to wear down, it needs to be resurfaced. It's just a lot of things, and then the tennis courts are another thing on top of that. So I think something, we need to do something, how are you guys going to break it up in terms of phases or how we want to pay for it? That's, I mean, that's going to be ultimately up to you guys. I do think, though, we probably need to move some, forward on some aspect of this.
So, can I ask you a question then? Based on, you know, what you know, and, and Wade as well too, what, what you know for our sports, for our athletic program, you know, what would you, let's say we're going to break, let's just sort of break this up. The first one is the, the track and the football field at two point eight. The second one is the next one behind the Yale at four point four. And let's just say we do the pit field and the tennis courts together for one point three or one point four, whatever it is. How would you rate what should be done first?
Well, I, I mean, obviously, the four point four is going to get you kind of the most, the most things done and covered in one fell swoop, I think. But I do think if we did the track for two point eight, the track, and again, the track needs to be redone again, so I mean, you almost have to do that, you can figure out baseball and softball probably will. But I mean, the track needs to be done, all the lights need to be replaced at that field. And if you're doing that, you're going to have all those trucks and heavy equipment there. I mean, not turfing it would be a mistake. So I think ultimately, we've got probably the eight lane track and the, and the turf field for, because you still need to get lacrosse, soccer. You can have baseball practice, softball practice on that field, you won't be able to play a game on it, football, obviously. So I think you would give a lot of use on that.
Yeah, I also want to mention, and I think it's important just for the committee to know, you have an agreement with Morton U Soccer, you're going to have to seriously look at that agreement because the ability to play behind the Yale School, anything, practice including it, is a, is a problem. So that means we're, we're going to have to jointly spend money on our field, not just Morton U Soccer, and as you know, they, they have the best natural fields in town.
That's a good point.
I think another thing to consider too is, you know, if we do the track and the football field in that first phase, those can also generate some money back, you know, because that field, the field could be leased out to, you know, other, you know, whether it's a lacrosse club, a soccer club, you know, bearing availability. You know, and obviously, and the, the track itself, I mean, you're talking regional meets and things like that because, you know, so I, I think those could also generate some revenue that, you know, potentially could offset the costs of the other phases.
I mean, the issue still comes down to if, if the, if, if the board of selectmen is going to be making a decision on the permanent building committee's recommendations for sites, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're moving on an article for the purposes of a debt exclusion for X, well, either town hall or, or senior center. I think, and again, I think that's the question to ask, they might not need to borrow that for the purchase. It might be a one-time cost, or it could be a five-year borrow instead of a ten or twenty-year borrow. I don't, I don't know, I mean, if you remember, there were donations made for the permanent building committee or for building, I believe at one point it was announced it was, it was easily over a million dollars if I remember correctly. And it's in some type of refund. If that's true, then, then they could potentially be using that fund just for the purchases of the properties. I think another question to ask.
Anybody else have any comments?
So, yeah, I'll, I'll, I can come in here.
So, yeah, I'll I'll bring, I think I was here, um. A couple of different things. First and foremost, I I think we wanna get away from the idea that there's a right time to do this project. You know, it's it's a lengthy project. It's gonna go over a number of years. And I I just don't think you can accurately tell me what the correct time to start the project is. You know, if we look back, I mean, a year and a half, and said, and, you know, when we have started at that day, we we we're gonna win it. You know, uh, and to to Joe's point earlier, is if we if we turn this to the town meeting in the fall. This is still a project that's not gonna start for well over a year. So, I I I think, I think we wanna, we wanna kind of wrap back a little bit from from. Twenty to twenty, what the right day to start the project is, because it's it's again, such a lengthy thing. Um. The the second thing I wanted to hear was was the borrowing issue, whether you borrow or get exclusion, and and Joe kind of. Joe talked a little bit about this, but I think it it bears your opinion. You you wanna, you really wanna remember, like. Any anything that they borrow is gonna end up in an operational cost. So looking at the the field at. Two point eight million, correct, two point eight million? So, just just on a straight straight line, you have over twenty years, you're talking about running thirty thousand dollars out of the operational expenses every year. You know, we don't know, the town, the town has a hard time finding money right now. So, if if in fact, we we have some debt coming off. And if it was actually passes that, that's great, and that's something we wanna think about. But you you gotta keep that in mind. I I don't think we we necessarily wanna add operational expense, so. So borrowing to fund any of this, I think is probably, I actually, I I question what best way to do it. And 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 second down, I I think that likely there's one that happens and borrowing done by the tennis side for. The town on senior center as well. So even if some debt is coming off, it's very possible that it's gonna be superseded or surpassed by by the debt that's gonna occur. For for their projects as well. So we just gotta bear that in mind. Um, with with respect to to bringing up our project. I think if if you're gonna if you're gonna do this in phases, if your phase one is is the fields and the track. I I think you wanna do the actual best job you can do on those, because that's gonna be the last thing you're gonna get. You're you're not gonna get a second phase. I I find it highly unlikely. I I think we're we're swimming against the tide to get one of these things done. I think if we get one passed and the election gets into our project, I don't think we're much the town or second phase is gonna happen. I I just simply don't see the town passing it. Unless the demographics and the town change considerably in the next twelve, five years. Um, and. Uh, that's, so, but the last thing I'm talking about is is kind of breaking through town, and and Joe's point is an excellent one. It's it's important to to figure out what the town is. Is talking about right now. If they are talking about just funding the land, then I don't see that necessarily involves us. Um, if if they're talking about only the floor on a larger vote, then we have to seriously consider whether or not we wanna we wanna be with them. And I I I I think whether whether or not it's a right project, and we we feel like. You know, is there a question about is it is it possible as as a group primary process breaking up? I think whoever whoever goes first, if it gets passed and given, that project will be swimming against the tide. Whoever whoever is the second project is the man that's feeling like a bribe to me really quick. You're you're not gonna see that second project pass. So I I think at this point, for me, the correct method now is to say, hey, listen. Let's let's move forward as a town, let's try to do this as a town, and if the town says, hey, it's a town, we don't want it, then we can leave it. But I don't think breaking it up is gonna work. It's certainly it's certainly not gonna work for the second, the second part of that, that puzzle. Um, and I I do want to go back one one real quick point on on breaking up a project into into different phases. I I I'm not saying that breaking it isn't necessarily the right thing. We we may wanna look at scaling it back and just say, okay. You know, the field and track is the right thing to do for now, and. If in fact financially, you're like, wow, you know, financial situation is gonna change, the town demographics are gonna change, and we can we can do something that's good, then that's great. But I think, you know, when you look at it like, do we wanna go from a full project, the eight point six? Or do we wanna scale it back, you know, whether it be the fields in the yell or just the field and the track? I mean, it's it's. It's certainly something more disgusting to be here about, and just a little history for maybe a long, long time, um, that one. That was originally the intention. The intention originally was, and what do you, uh, uh, the football field, the football field is a metal sheet. It's gonna be fixed. Nothing has changed since then, so back to Aaron's point, like, that that's something you have to do. You know, we have to bring that forward. Whether we bring that stuff forward or there's is a question we should certainly harder. Uh, and if you if you think it's not the the quote right time for the project, then it's not the right time for all of it. But I I think, I think at least on that part, for the for the for the two point eight, for the field and track, I think that reason for when when in fact, we all move forward. That's all I have.
So, um, Madam Chair, unless other members have other items to add to this conversation, which would probably be the opportune time to see if there's any public commentary.
Sure, um, does anybody wanna comment before we ask the public for comments? Is there any public commentary? Maybe Jen, you can see if anybody's.
At this time, um, there is not. However, there is a hand raised. Let me just take a look here. Um, people are welcome to add their comments in the chat box, which would be great. Otherwise, um, I can. Um, mute, I'm sorry, unmute the person that had their hand raised and just looking for that who that person is.
Thanks, Jen. Yep.
The other thing we can do too is, um, folks can, as part of just any anytime, just use the, uh, let's talk on the webpage and. Put in their question in there. If they want a response to their question, they do have to have a response email. It can't be about us.
Um, I'm going to unmute Peter to give him the opportunity to ask his question. Peter, go ahead.
It looks like Peter, you're still muted.
I'm trying to unmute.
Oh, that's you, Jen, sorry.
Um, alright.
There is something, there is.
Hi, everyone!
Hi, Peter.
Yes, um, yes, um, about the, um, I I agree with, because the football field, which. Is the mini side of mini games over the years, is in bad shape, and I agree, and it's it's gonna need. A synthetic football field and a turf football field, and the track is in bad shape. And it is broken, so we can't be preparing things all at once at this time, but we. Need a new track and a football field, and we need more fields for people to play, so I can resume my lessons still for the Peter channel. Four minutes and a half minutes, go answer!
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Karen.
Um, so if I could, um, is there any additional comments? We don't see any, Jen.
There are no additional comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, uh, I guess. It said that we were going to have a discussion and a vote, but I think that, um. For me, and I I don't know if others agree, it feels like we really. Don't have something to vote on at this point until we have our joint meeting on Thursday. Are other people feeling that way?
Yeah, I I would say we're gonna vote, we're gonna take, until we get more information.
Sure.
I agree as well, Jen.
Okay, so, um, thanks, Jen. Uh, Karen, actually, can Joe, can you just find, just so that. Just so that we have an understanding, a clear picture of everything, can you find out from the town if how the debt looks and if anything is coming off the books?
Yes, I can, as you were just saying.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that, and, um. And I think, and you very nicely sort of shared your thoughts on kind of, I guess, priorities, but. I'm not sure if that can be something kind of that you could share, uh, just to confirm that. If we want to do the entire project moving forward, I think I, um, I agree with what. You shared, Janice, in regards to phase two maybe never happening if we ended up breaking this up. That really concerns me. Um, I think historically, our town is not good at. Voting in a phase one and a phase two. I wouldn't know because I don't know if we've ever tried, but we've never really gone past phase one. So I would think that it would be a little concerning to assume that we could get phase two passed, even if it's like, you know, years down the road. Um, but maybe we could just come up with sort of that priority list. Aaron, just really agree with me. One of the things that you had talked about is the middle school tennis courts. You, I think a lot of us may have. Thought that maybe those tennis courts could be utilized more than sort of what we knew after you kind of explained. The state that they're in currently, so I don't know if there's an idea of how long those tennis courts will be. Viable for our tennis teams, our tennis programs, and I think, um. I'm sure that our community uses the tennis courts as well, not just the school students, so. It might be good just to kind of have that, um, more documented, if that's okay, Aaron?
Yeah, that's fine.
Maybe you could just say that, um, to me. I'm sorry?
No, Karen, also just to add, I did, um, I think one of the things that's really interesting about, and Wade, if you don't mind, I'm doing, I hate to put you on the spot, but. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the 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 Legion Field for the for the entire system is right in that area.
That's correct. The, uh, it it pumps up from the baseball tribun plan that goes down to where that parking area is, the basketball courts, and it's actually under the. Uh, tennis courts. Uh, that's why we get such heaves, uh, in New England and, uh, and it it, Taran's point, it. Rises up quite a bit, and then when it's thrown out underneath it, it kind of sucks back down again, but there's still, there are cracks there. Um, the tennis courts are valuable. We haven't done anything to them since they were done back in nineteen ninety-eight, so, um. You know, it's like, it's like everything, you know, where do we start? Um, this project was kind of an all or nothing project, and. And I I I can't agree more with Denise. I mean, I think it has to be one request. Um, it's it's very, it's very unlikely that. That we could ever go back for a phase two. I think we've all been here long enough to know that once you, once we ask for something and we're granted it. It's supposed to last forever. So I think it's vitally important that we keep this this project together and 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 go forward, and even if we phase it in. That that's 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 doable, but we can't request phasing it in. I think we have to request for the whole project. Um, and then just one other thing, I mean, there there is a lot of work that needs to be done to the fields, to the lights, to the tennis courts. But this is nothing new for us, and I've been in Norton now for over twenty years. I mean, this is, this is just part for the courts, and this is what we do. We. You know, very rarely are we given an opportunity like the middle school or the high school to. To to start a project from 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 new and and take care of it right on through, and I think, you know, since Dr. Byetta's been here. I think you've seen the difference in in facilities and and, um, especially with the high school. I mean, that that building still looks as good today as it did when it was taken care of, and. I'm not sure we did that in the past, so I I think it's a credit to Dr. Byetta and 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 the work that he's done. But, um, but I I do think it's 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 time that that we. We put something like this together and and, you know, hopefully we we can get it approved, and it would just be such an asset for the town.
So the other thing too, Jen, to kind of wrap this up for mine, and then, um, not to belabor the point, but, you know, Matt Wells, our president, and I just had a discussion. The day and and I think Wade, you, I think it was a vacation day for you, but we just had this talk down. Eighty thousand, what do you want to do with Shelly, one of your, uh, big questions, which is that whole. Um, train thing around, um, you know, looking at things such as, um, solar. As a way to drive down our operational expenses, uh, solar as a way to take care of those those operational expenses because of saving. And then solar, um, and and a new project where, um, Matt and Wade know this, I actually. Back in the day, when training in front of the board of select, when I actually said to them, if if you're turning, uh, if you're not using water on fields. That's energy savings, not only electrical, but also water. Um, and my comment was that, you know, how do we approach this potential project? As a project that is, um, very much or or somewhat pays for itself. If in fact the state would allow us to do that, and we just haven't done anything in the train thing, we may wanna go back to that discussion. And simply say, who's who's the authority? And the state then says that you can't utilize. These savings projects as a way to build a field that's going to be connected to a school and a community.
So that that's a great point. Um, where where I I have two points, actually. Where do we stand with the whole solar? Um, that we had talked about with train.
Yeah, I I.
Forward?
Yeah, so that is ready to, uh, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is that is ready for a recommendation, and then it's a matter of where does the, uh. Where where does the town and the schools go? Is it just the schools or just? Matt, I'd like to refer to you.
That's right, and when we say we're in the evaluation phase, uh, we have our evaluations mostly complete. And then, uh, we kind of froze for this point in time. Um, we can pretty quickly get the sand packed up, and and that's the 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 question. Does the town wanna go in on this with us, or do we just move forward with schools? Um, we can do either. Um, and it still has their name, the names of the buildings for the town attached to it, don't we? We get five, six years down the road, they could still have projects done at the police station or fire station without, uh, having to go back out to bid.
And Matt, for the purposes only of rumor, most shadowing it and getting rid of it, what does that train concept, if that's train or whatever the company is? What does that really mean as a project for the schools of the town?
Uh, well, so the project is done, uh, they do an audit first, and then when it's completed, the project is. You you complete projects that are that are already funded through future savings, with continued savings. If you run projects in the next year, you don't save the money, they say they won't be cut.
So you you don't have an added cost, you have a deferred cost?
That's correct. Yeah, I think, uh, as long as you move forward with with projects, you you never have to pay that audit bill. Right? And it's all around energy and savings.
So it it's my opinion, Joe, that that we should be moving forward on this. Um, you know, if, I I think we check with the town to see where they're at, but if we don't hear back in a reasonable time, we we start moving forward. I I feel like we've waited. Um, we've waited quite a bit, and and there has been, um, you know, obviously COVID changed things, but even prior to that. There was, you know, some waiting, um, on others' behalf, and I I think it's time. I think it's time for us to move forward.
Two two topics to address. One is to find out what it is and and anything that could be the energy and savings potential, um, audit.
Can you just repeat those two things you, um, broke up a little on my end? I couldn't hear.
Sorry, so that would be that, um, I don't need a vote on this, it's just a request from individuals, but one is to get back to you on the debt. From the town and anything that's coming off the debt or being added, and two. Get into the latest information on the train audit and where we are in the process and see if folks wanna move forward with it on the other side.
Exactly, I fully agree. And I agree. But I just have, um, I just wanna make one other point about the athletic complex. Um. Yeah, I just wanna be very clear that I absolutely one hundred percent believe that we need this entire project. Because not only is it important for our athletic program, but it's important for us to to bring money in, um, with rentals and and things like that. What what's changed for me is my confidence in something like this getting passed. That's my fear, and I feel like, you know, uh, you know, and listen, I'm not one to be negative. I'm, I always try to see the positive. But I'm trying to wrap my head around, okay, let's say we we go with this whole thing and we put it in front of the town for debt exclusion, and what if it fails? What is our plan B? That's really where I'm thinking, because I I would really like to get to a point where something doesn't fail. And and we can still move forward. That's really where I'm at, because if we put this whole project in front of the town for eight point six million dollars, almost eight point seven. And it fails, where are we at then? That's really my concern.
Yeah, and and I think that the the issue is that the the. The long term, I don't know what the long-term debt is, number one. Number two. I just don't know within this economy how much love there is for people, say, please tax me more. Look, how is it that it's?
Well, I think there's a lot of uncertainty as well, um, with change of select board members. Um, you know, that commission changes coming up. There there there's a lot. There's a lot of. Political things happening, so it just, I'm just concerned, that's all, and I just, I I just always need to have a plan B.
And so, um, looking at this, I'm I'm kind of thinking about those, and most things are. Two shows and 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 one of the plan B. And we we might wanna look at something differently too. Well, well, I'm I'm not sure about taking on debt for anything, and I think that probably is is long-term, not the right way to go. If if we do wanna pursue that, if we do, if we do think we wanna break these things up, and I'm guessing that. Pitfield and tennis court are are the end of your, your maze list, nothing to do? Is that fair?
Uh, yes.
And the the tennis courts are about four hundred thousand and the pits are a million. Is that that right?
Yeah, man, that's a lot of things to do.
So if if we if we kind of think of this and and kind of have intuitive reactions. If if we do end up saying, yeah, we wanna break this up, I think maybe we might wanna look at, say, okay. We wanna do the field at two point eight million as a debt exclusion, and then actually, um, go out and borrow from the back end of it. And say, yeah, we'll do either the tennis courts and all of the pits as well. And say, well, if we either the tennis courts and the pits as well, because it's half the cost of, of the field. So now you're running forty thousand, our operational expense becomes seventy, seventy thousand. And if you then go further, if you do just the tennis courts, it's only twenty thousand. Just the pits is, is fifty thousand, obviously, we have, but. So, so that might be something to think about as well, Erin and, and Joe and Matt, when you're, when you're looking at priority this year, and if we do break it up, is doing the tennis, we want to try and, and, uh, for the smallest of the project and increase the lower costs as possible, and take the two point eight million over there and order the debt exclusion. Something to think about. It's, it's, it's like, I guess, I'm thinking, if, if there are small numbers here, it won't be that bad, and, and those are our small numbers, the tennis courts and the pit.
But Dinesh, let me ask you this, ju- just to kind of take it one step further. And, you know, listen, I'm just thinking as we're discussing. But if we started with the eight lane track and the, and the turf for the two point eight and brought in the pitfield and tennis courts, you know, at one point four for a total of four point two, do we break it up into two projects, four point two? And then, you know, do that, and then have the next one at the four point four?
Right. It's not really, it's not really to break it up into two projects so much as we're paying for it two different ways.
Yeah, exactly. Right.
Three different ways, right. So, and, and, and let me, and let me be very clear with this, Sheri, I couldn't agree with you more that we, we need to do all of this stuff. And, you know, this isn't the first time, the first, the first thing that we've talked about with the school committee and said, hey, you know, if we do this, the payout is actually lower than the cost. This is going to be one of those situations, you know, and just facility rentals. I can think of five or six teams running top of my head that would buy our red fields on a regular basis, not only having, you know, the different tournaments and stuff on there. But that's, you know, nobody ever wants to do that math, that, you know, math is hard. And so people sit there and say, wow, four point four million sounds like a lot, so I'll just say that. And, but I couldn't agree with you more that it's, this is, this is something we, not only need to do, we actually should do it. I mean, financially, the actual cost when all is said and done is not going to be that high.
Right, I agree, and that's why I think that we needed to have this conversation so that we could all discuss this, you know, before going to the table on Thursday with some of our options. I just think that, you know, whether we look it or not, things are different, you know, than three, four months ago. And I just, you know, I, I would just like to set us up for success and not another letdown. That, that's all, that's where I'm at with this.
But I think if you have any information in an upcoming meeting that you're having with them, maybe that will allow for us to, at, at another, another meeting to make another decision.
Agreed.
Agree, and Sheri, I hear exactly what you're saying, that we really want a plan B. But maybe waiting until Thursday, we have some good ideas now. I think we've kind of raised some good ideas. I think sitting at the table at the joint meeting on Thursday will be really helpful. And then if it's okay, we can come back together. Is that what you're suggesting, Dr. Byetta, that we come back together after that to kind of?
Yeah, we'll schedule, we'll schedule the next meeting, because I'm going to need you for the reopening plan vote at some point before August tenth.
Sure. So does that sound feasible for everybody, that we kind of have some good ideas, some thoughts for our meeting on Thursday? We'll see what the select board shares, what PBC shares, and then we can come back together as a school committee? Is everybody good with that?
Yeah, that's, I think that's a good idea. And then, Joe, we just need to talk about, because I know the PBC was looking for, for some info from you for the August tenth. So we, you and I can circle back and figure out how that went, so we'll put Carolyn, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Yes, I have them on my, I have them on my calendar already.
Okay, so I'll go back to the chair and let her know that you will be there?
Yes, I would love to attend.
Got it, I'll take care of it.
And I think by August tenth, Sheri, we should have a, a pretty sort of thoughtful plan to move forward.
Right, absolutely. I mean, even after Thursday's meeting, if, if the school committee needs to circle back and, and meet again, you know, to, to have a vote and see how we want to move forward, I think that's what we do, but I agree.
Okay, that's perfect. And I think that we're all kind of facing this on his, you know, sort of history of Norton. And I think that's why we know that, that's our concern, right? Is how do we move forward to be successful?
A hundred percent agree on that.
So I think that discussion is done. I know Sheri and Jen, both of you potentially need to leave. I know maybe your meeting was pushed off a few minutes, so is our?
Six forty-five, so hopefully we can take a look at those resolutions and.
Okay.
You should be okay. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So keep us on, sort of, on your watch, system Jen, to make sure we don't go over.
I'm at this, thank you.
Discussion and vote on COVID nineteen resolutions, Dr. Byetta?
Thank you, Madame Chair, just really two different ones. Actually, the first one, C should have a CC to Jay Barrows as well. I just saw that it wasn't on there. But this is really, the first one that you have before you as a, as a resolution, both of them speak to the same general thoughts. But the first one that you have before you is really the opportunity for not only the school committees, but also unions at the local level to understand that the issues around the finances and costs to reopening in this C nineteen world. And how a resolution speaks through being noted and forwarded to the government, the education secretary, the education commissioner, the Senate President, the House Speaker, the Joint Education Committee Co-Chair, and then Senator Paul Feeney, I'll, I'll make sure that that adds Mr. Robaros and all types in now, and the town manager, that we're really looking to make sure that these responsibilities in these times, that we have to make sure that we're prepared to open them, that that has a cost. We've been very lucky in Norton to work with the town side on some of these issues, as you know. And as you know, I'm, last week, there was an announcement of some more quote C nineteen grant money coming from the state. The resolution is something where, whereas if school got to reopen this following the mess of COVID nineteen pandemic, it is a responsibility of each school district to do so safely and responsibly. And whereas it's a responsibility of the state to ensure that each school district is able to pay for the enormous additional staffing, transportation, and support to do this, and whereas the state cannot expect mandatory C nineteen state guidelines to be followed, or also ensuring that each school district has the funds required to implement these guidelines, therefore, it be known and resolved that the state must guarantee each school district following the principle of whatever COVID nineteen expenses are required to follow state mandates. We must ensure state-wise, who we open, and the state responsible and that, well. And I think that we're moving in that direction, although there was a lot of questions, Madam Chair, and to the members, there's a lot of questions around the issue of staffing. As you know, we didn't have to lay off at this time many folks. Other districts, over two thousand educators have been laid out, laid off statewide. I mean, still don't know what the state budget looks like. So we're asking for your support and to have this filed with the appropriate state personnel.
Any comments, questions? So this is something that we vote on?
Yes, it is. You will need a, a motion, a second, and then a vote.
Is there any comment from the school committee, questions? Any comment from the community? There is none.
Any?
None?
No.
Perfect. So then is there a motion to approve the resolutions?
Oh, moved.
Thanks, Dan, and there's second, third, third. So all in favor, Dinesh?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kathleen? Sheri?
Yes.
Carolyn's a yes, and Kathleen, you're muted? I think Kathleen is muted.
Do you have any way for a phone? Right, you can take the phone as four zero one.
Okay.
And the second resolution, Ms. Gallagher is also sent to the appropriate folks in the lab, the addendum of the one rep. And this is more around the Student Opportunity Act. So this is a situation for us that is not, it's not bringing any amount counts. If you remember, the Student Opportunity Act provided us the typical points of thirty dollars per student that we've been getting in the community for, going on twelve years now. Ranged, I think the highest was a hundred, I won points, I remember, before my days going on as a superintendent. So this is really an act around the Student Opportunity Act and support for educational funding to make sure that elected officials that supported the Student Opportunity Act, which was millions of dollars for some communities, it's seventy-two thousand dollars for us, just want you to know that for the record. And this, these days and times, everything counts. But, and we did, we are filing the Student Opportunity Act before the August deadline, which is basically our position. So we do need the money, or else we have to find the money somewhere else, and it was around special ed. So this is where as the mass legislation governing the Student Opportunity Act to twenty nineteen, because the state school funding form was out of date, failed to provide all students with the education which they are constitutionally entitled, and whereas the inadequacy funding was found mostly in school districts serving high concentrations of low-income students, and this one is a source with disabilities, and whereas the student opportunity enterprise fills in funding forms to provide greater resources for our students, where the riders share going to the low-income districts, and whereas our students are ingrained now after public colleges and public schools, the college leadership died in their march in response to the C nineteen pandemic, and whereas in the upcoming, I didn't really notice, of the moving hands education opportunity statement of the health and garden services, and whereas the nature is additional services exist in every school district and greatest in school district that receives a lot of sharing of funding or under the Student Opportunity Act, and whereas the federal state and local governments are shared responsibly for making sure all students receive the education which the Act constitutionally invited, therefore, we resolve that the Norton School Committee supports the college to approve a new deal that will fund it for state and local governments in response to the economic crisis caused by this pandemic, raising revenues progressively if necessary to ensure that they fulfill their obligations to educate our students. For the two mass legislation governing child, they should some kind of education pre-trained through twelve higher education at the level needed to maintain current staffing and services fully fund first year of the Opportunity Act, and enable students in our states first at cognitive thrive as we begin coming from the pandemic. Our town should maintain some, to fully fund our public schools respectfully, provided you can get sent to all the state official list.
Thank you.
Yes.
A lot of info. Are there any comments or questions from the school committee? Seeing none, any public comments or questions?
Not at this time.
Thanks, Ben. So this also take needs a vote?
Yes, it does, and it'll be sent on your behalf to all the elected officials.
So is there a motion to approve the Norton School Committee Resolution in support of education funding in the COVID nineteen era?
Oh, moved.
Second?
Second.
Thanks. All in favor, let's see, Sheri?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Kathleen? Carolyn is a yes, and we will do, Kathleen? We will do a four zero vote.
Carolyn, actually, you can text me. She can unmute.
Oh, she cannot unmute?
No, she's having a hard time.
Okay, so how do we?
Oh, I'm muted, yes. There she is. Can you hear me now? Yes, yes.
Kathleen, we weren't sure if you could hear us, so.
Yes, I'm a, I'm a yes on both.
Thank you.
But I mean, you already did the four zero, so that's fine, but.
We have the vote to reconsider the original vote, it's been changed.
Can we say that one more time? I'm sorry.
You can, you can ask for reconsideration of the first vote in order to allow for Kathleen to vote.
Okay.
Motion to take, motion to reconsider the first resolution.
Motion for the first resolution. For left Dinesh.
This is second.
I can.
Dan, all in favor, Carolyn, yes. Sheri?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And Dan?
Yes.
So now we go back?
Now you revoke, now you revoke that resolution.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Norton School Committee Resolution, COVID nineteen state funding?
Go moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Kathleen?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Four percent, we just pass five zero zero.
Thank you. Dr. Byetta, is there any additional items?
We continue to work on the entry plans. I will have some stuff in writing coming to you. And Thursday, we may need an executive session in order to bring you up on collective bargaining, potential items that will need to be addressed by the school committee. I'll let you know tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Carolyn, I had something.
Sure.
So I just wanted to take a second, because I know there's been some, some dialogue on Facebook, favorite thing, but I think it's important for the Norton School Committee to just have a brief conversation about it. I know the MTA, I believe, is looking into SROs. And I, I know that some people are concerned of where we stood about keeping or getting rid of our SROs in our school system. And I just want to go on the record for one, and I will continue to always support our SROs, SROs in our school system. I think they play a very important role and a huge part of our team. So I just wanted to kind of have that conversation to put people's nuns and ease where, where I stood anyway, and I don't know if anybody else wants to comment on it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine agreeing that, to me, keeping, keeping yes on those is a loss, thank you. And that's not a debate, of course, to be quite frankly.
And I agree as well. I think that we really developed a collaborative sort of environment. So I agree, Sheri, thank you for bringing that to our attention. For those of us who are not on social media often, we don't always see sort of those comments or those kinds of conversations that are happening. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I just want to note, Ms. Gallagher, that the police chief and I have discussed this item. I've also had some discussions with our local association. At this time, it's not seen as an issue for them at all. Congress SROs do a doing job, an awesome job of making sure that our kids are safe. Their first responsibility is the safety of the community. But as you know, without any specificity per se, we have made sure that students are getting services. It's one of our first priorities, not only as a school system, but our SROs. There are some changes coming forward from recent legislation on SROs and who's responsible for them and all of that stuff that the chief and I are going to have to talk about, because it does change for our memory and understanding. I, I mean, I, I came into this district with really no SRO in those last few years, and we started it, and I think it's actually, I know, I know, let me rephrase it, I know that it has helped student families.
I think we're all in agreement with that, so thank you for bringing that to our attention, Sheri. Certainly, maybe we should just sort of once again say, if anybody on social media ever has a concern or a question, would like sort of, you know, information from the source, they could always use the Let's Talk option, which is on the school website, and reach out to Dr. Byetta directly, who can then sort of answer any concerns or questions anybody has. Is there any additional comments? Anything else to discuss?
I'm going to run it.
Thank you. Seeing that, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you. So all in favor, Kathleen?
I.
Dan?
Yes.
Dinesh?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. So thanks, everybody. See you on Thursday.
Thank you. I'll get some answers to you right away.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Good night. Have a good meeting, Jen and Sheri.
Thank you.